Good evening. It's right at 5 o'clock, so we will get started. Welcome, community members, candidates, and friends. We really appreciate everyone who's here and able to come out after rescheduling. Thank you to our candidates for making the time to be here, and those that aren't, we will read their responses from on what they have sent to the Chamber office before this evening. To kind of welcome you and get started, just a quick reminder, take this for what it is. I have taken a lot of leadership classes and read many books, and all of them seem to have all the answers. When it comes to leadership, here are a few of the keys to success and thoughts to ponder from some of the experts, just to open the evening and hopefully get some laughter at the fact that there are actual answers out there. For the keys to good leadership is vision, engaging others, managing self, and getting results. Remember that our vision is more important than my vision. A powerful vision gives any group of people direction, be it a town, a company, a school, or a nation. It informs that the choices are made and that they shape the future. Exceptional leaders do not impart a vision; they cultivate the emergence of a vision. This is a huge difference. Leaderships who facilitate the discovery of a collective vision help create a vision that is owned by a group and has a life of its own. Engaging Others. Divide and conquer is great, only if your main interest is conquering. However, if you're seeking solutions in the best interest of a community, you must focus on the common ground that bring people with differing perspectives together in an atmosphere of mutual respect. Managing Self. You can lose your constituents overnight if trust is lost. Universal ways to gain the trust include everyday good management practice, transparency in your business, whatever it may be, and telling the truth in a time of crisis or change. It's been said and proven that the higher up in the tree you climb, the more visible your less favorable side, that is, becomes, so need I say more. Results. If you're going to, you may make a difference in a small town, you have to show constructive results in your efforts. Results can be tangible, like constructing a new town for soccer field, or tangible, like building better relationships between officials. Exceptional leaders do both. So here's some reminders moving forward, and please have open ears and respect as we listen to how these willing leaders of Minneapolis can help improve this area. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. I'm sure a lot of you know that Johnny and Bobby Hudson had originally worked a lot on getting this organized, and they had intended on being the moderators. Fay's health has been failing, and many of you know that we lost Fay Friday, so they are having their visitation this afternoon, and obviously, we're not able to be here. So our thoughts and prayers are with them, and I will try to do a little tap dance here to fill in with some piece of what they would have done. The first thing we're going to do is we're going to talk about how we're going to run the forum. The rules of the forum are that the city council candidates will each have three minutes to introduce themselves and their reasons for running for the office of city council. Word one will go first, followed by words two and three. Who speaks first in each word will be determined by the list which I have, which I would love to tell you is alphabetical, but it's what I scribbled in her, may or may not be alphabetical. Then after that, we will have time for the mayors, mayoral candidates, and those people who are not here, the candidates that are not here, most of them have given us some information to share with you. We also will have questions. Some of the questions were sent in in advance, some were given at the door. When we give those questions, each candidate will have a chance to answer, so there won't be any need for cross interruptions or anything. It should be a very polite and orderly kind of a forum. The first ward, I believe, is Jim Barrett and Hope Spano. Your three? Okay, let's try that again. First district, the first ward is Leanna Christ and Kevin Kline. Is that correct? Okay. We'll let ladies go first here, so let's welcome Leanna Christ to the podium.
Do you have any light for this? Okay. I'll have to hold it. Okay, sorry about that, guys. As you know, I'm Leanna Christ, and I want to thank you guys for coming out for the second scheduled time. I want to introduce myself. Some people know me, but they don't know too much about me. I moved to Minneapolis in 1997 from Marion, Kansas. We moved here because our daughter had married a Minneapolis boy, and she gave us three grandchildren, and we wanted to be here and had to be in, helping to be a part of our grandchildren's lives. We felt that was very important. At the time, I was a financial advisor with Wood Allen Reed, so I was able to relocate, and my husband was unable to work, so this just opened up the opportunity to move here. Prior to Marion, I had lived in Abilene, and while in Abilene and in Marion, I had worked for the State Department of SRS, and I'd been there 14 years. I determined financial eligibility for food stamps, cash, and medical assistance in Marion, Chase, and Morris Counties. Two of those years, I focused entirely upon long-term care eligibility for nine nursing homes in those three counties. While in Marion, I saw the opportunity to complete the requirements for my bachelor's degree at Tabor College, and I was a member of the class of '95. I had already earned my associate degree from Kansas Wesleyan University in '79. My husband Ray was a council member when he passed away in 2003, and I was asked to complete his term, and I was elected for my first four-year term in 2005. I am a member of the League of Kansas Municipalities and attended annual conferences in the fall of each year for the past seven years. The conferences are three to four days long, and they consist of vendors, workshops, training sessions to educate, support, inform, and answer questions that we may have about our cities, and also include motivational speakers for city government. I see the position of councilperson is a great responsibility. At all times and in every situation, we must make decisions with our heads and not with our hearts or personal views or preferences. We must at all times keep in mind what is best for the community as a whole, and not for us personally, or for friends, or any special interest groups. While I've been on the council, we have set up the water treatment plant, which is by far the biggest project, and this provides a city with cleaner, tastier water, no more red wash loads, which I was very glad to get. We've settled with ADM, and ADM is still in the process of cleaning up well number 12. We have established safe routes to school, which has left many new sidewalks and crosswalks adding to the looks of several areas in our town, and other crosswalks throughout the town have been designed to meet American with Disabilities guidelines. Another big one thing that we did is we changed the EMS from 100% part-time responders to creating four full-time positions and part-time positions to help, and they are helped by volunteers. We are in the ongoing process of removing dilapidated houses throughout the city, and we're refurbishing directional signs. I also have visions for Minneapolis. I'd like to see continued improvement of the streets, which I'm sure everybody wants to see that. I'd like to see a center for the fire, EMS, police department, and city office spaces in one big area. I'd like to get the youth involved in the government through representation on the council. No voting rights, of course, because they're not old enough and they have not been elected, but the youth are the future of our communities, and I would like to see them get involved in city government. Okay. I didn't see it. Sorry.
Sorry. I hope you got through everything that you wanted to share.
No, I didn't.
Okay, well, during question and answers, hopefully you'll get to cover a few more points.
Not really.
Apparently not. Maybe we need to, we'll take it up here. Okay, just stand up, then yell shout out, that'll work. Just kidding. Okay, I'd like to welcome Kevin Kline to the podium.
Hello, I'm Kevin Kline. I didn't prepare anything, I'll just let you know. I grew up in an area, Ada, moved to Minneapolis in '95. I've been, grew up on a dairy farm. Well, I started C and R plating. I've been a businessman in Minneapolis since 1990. I just want to run to help improve the city. I think they're doing a lot of good things. One of the things Leanna said, the streets has been just phenomenal. The slurry seal, we can all remember oil and sand, and now this slurry seal's just been awesome. And I'm hoping there's other things, maybe not with the streets, but with other parts of the city, we can look. To me, that was outside the box. Without Brian Bowles on, worked for the city, we probably wouldn't have known about that. I'm sorry, I didn't prepare anything. I didn't have a question to answer, to ask me all the questions you want. I appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. For District Two, see if I get this right, Lanny Zajnoff, Russell Thornton, and John Schmidt. Lanny, would you please take the podium?
Hey, my name is Lanny Zajnoff. I'll give you a quick rundown of me. I moved to Minneapolis in 1975. My wife got married in '75. Started on the police department in January of 1980. I worked as an EMT and police officer from 1980 to 1985. In 1985, I took the position as Assistant Chief and Assistant EMS Director. From 1985 to 1997, I held that position. In '97, I was promoted to the position of Chief and Director of EMS. During that time, I spent 15 years spending, attending the city council as my position of Chief. During that time, I was able to see how the city government worked and how things come to be as they did. I think it's real important that to know where you are, you need to know how you got here, and to know where you're at and where you want to go, you need to know how you got to where you are now. I feel that my experience of sitting in on the council, seeing the process and knowing what has gone on, to make the decisions that have been made as far as Ross A Street, the water treatment, the safe streets, bringing the Minneapolis EMS from complete volunteer to partial full-time is important, and you see how it came about, and you know how to do it now. So with that in mind, I guess at this point, I hope I can get some votes. Thank you.
Thank you, Lanny. Russell Thornton?
You could have took a little longer, Lanny, if you wanted to. It's all right. I'm Russell Thornton. Thanks, citizens, fellow councilmembers, for coming out tonight. I'm not going to take up a bunch of your time this evening, stand up here and throw a bunch of big words and promises at you. My intent is to give you the facts and hopefully show you that I'm the person for this position. A lot of you might know me from Ottawa County Sheriff's Office, where I'm the undersheriff up there. I worked with Sheriff's Office for six and a half years. Before that, I worked for Lanny at the police department for two years. Been married to the biggest supporter, my wife, Ricky, for almost 17 years. We have three awesome teenage kids, also some of the biggest supporters. When we moved to town, we were welcomed with open arms, was the greatest thing by the citizens of Minneapolis. Although I have not lived in Minneapolis my whole life, I consider this home. I've never held a position like city council member, but I do feel like I have some experience and knowledge from my life. I help with important decisions on a daily basis and have some knowledge of politics. I promise the citizens of Minneapolis that I'll do a good job. I closely follow and listen to what was going on in the community and within the city administration for the last eight years. I've been active within the community and assisted with many projects. Not only do I assist with local law enforcement, but I have been volunteer for the fire department in District Two for the last five years. I felt at this point in my life, instead of sitting by and just following what was going on with the administration and the community, I wanted to be the one to assist in making decisions and bringing ideas to the table for a better community. I'm feeling the right person for this position, elected. I'll fill it for the citizens of Minneapolis and my ward. Thanks.
Thank you, Russell. Okay. I believe that we have a letter from John Schmidt, and Ashley Swisher is going to read that statement from him.
Good evening to you all. I am currently not able to be with you this evening, as I am in Peru with the Kansas Agricultural Rural Leadership Program, learning about their agricultural processes and how their communities are a part of this amazing South American country. I would like to take a moment to thank all the Minneapolis Chamber of Commerce, especially Ashley Swisher and Johnny Hudson for putting together this forum and giving me an opportunity to inform the voters of my candidacy for city council. My name is Jonathan Smith, and I believe in the future of Minneapolis. As a junior in college at Kansas State University, I felt like I needed to start giving back to a community that had blessed and helped me become who I am today, so I began working with the Ottawa County Fair Board. This has been an experience like none other, and I am now the president of the board. With the other board members, we are able to keep the youth involved in agriculture activities and hold a community social, bringing people together to enjoy our heritage and traditions. I believe that for Minneapolis to be prosperous, we need to continue keeping our youth engaged in the community, also to provide them with the opportunities to come back to Minneapolis to live and prosper. Some may say that a person of my age cannot be a leader, but I say that leadership is in the application and learning and quality experiences. I believe that I hold these qualities from my experiences in 4H, FFA, Kansas State University, and Ottawa County Fair, and the CARL program. I also believe I would be a valuable addition to the communication chain that occurs when dealing with city issues. Without communication, failure is inevitable, and the community breaks the part. My agenda is that I have no personal agenda. I believe that this is time for my generation to take part in our city government, and that is my intent. I want to serve my community and would appreciate your support on April 2nd. Thanks for your time and good evening, Jonathan Smith.
Candidates for the third ward are Jim Barrett and Hope Spano. We'll ask Jim to speak first, and then Ashley Swisher will be reading a statement from Hope Spano.
I'm Jim Barrett, running for Ward Three. I was born and raised in Minneapolis. Brought my beautiful wife from Georgia with her when I moved back out of the service. We've been married for 46 years this year. Had the opportunity to raise our children here in the school system and our grandchildren. And the reason I'm running for council is because I've had a job that I always worked out of town, and I never had the opportunity, and I've wanted to. So I would like to have this opportunity to run and serve on the council. I feel like I can help the city. I'm a conservative person. I feel like we need to do things for the city as far as doing things for the city and not foolish things, I can understand in a nice way. But also, I just served last year as the president of the Carnival Association and enjoyed that, and I feel like we've helped the Fair Board in many ways in that response done, and I enjoyed that very much. So I just want to take this time to ask for your vote, and I'll do my best for you as a councilman serving for Ward Three.
Thank you, Jim. And here's Ashley speaking for Hope Spano.
Just a reminder to elect Hope Spano for city council. I want to bring together the city of Minneapolis and bring it to its full potential by being proactive to bring fresh ideas that improve the lives of the families in this community, encouraging individuals and families to be involved in the community activities that will continue and promote growth and unity. Just a reminder of some of my involvement in the city of Minneapolis. I am on the park committee and the chair, which helped develop and enhance a new walking trail and research funding opportunities that we looked into, helped write a grant for that. Did the Markley Grove Park Friends Incorporated Foundation, which researched grant opportunities for the park improvement. We were awarded three grants in 2012 and '13, which were of $20,000 plus. The envisioning Minneapolis Action Group Two Chair, which encouraged local shopping in Minneapolis, and now we have a new sign for that. I did the Ottawa County Leadership Program participant to learn and understand the skills to become a better leader for Ottawa County. Was part of the Ottawa County Service Corps volunteer, provided assistance during the county fair. Was part of the Council of Catholic Women Church, which assisted in activities associated with Immaculate Conception Church. And a Chamber of Commerce member, personal business member to strengthen the local business community involved with my business in Mary Kay. So please vote for Hope Spano on April 2nd. Thank you.
Thank you. For the office of mayor, we have three candidates that are currently running. The first is Virginia Hoover, the second is Sanji McCall, and the third is Troy Lacy. Troy Lacy is not here, so for his portion, again, we will have Ashley Swisher speak on his behalf. So first, we'll just go down the row here. Sanji McCall. First, Troy Lacy.
I could at least do these in different voices, shouldn't I? Troy says that we need some change in our city government and that he feels like he is the right man. We need a fresh pair of eyes instead of being stuck in the past. There will be a question later regarding the taxes, and he says he's definitely interested in keeping taxes low to cut spending where necessary, and where we need to look at improving government for the good of all people, not just some with personal interest. And that was all Troy had.
Thank you. Come on, Sanji McCall.
I have lived in Minneapolis nearly 21 years. I am retired from Southwestern Bell. The last eight and a half years, I have served on city council. It has been a great privilege to serve the citizens of this community. I have met a lot of really nice people. Whenever a citizen has had a concern or complaint, I have tried very hard to listen to them, and then I always check out their concern, and then I find an answer or a solution, and then report back to them. We have a really nice community. We are very fortunate to have a beautiful golf course at the entrance of our city. It's a grand entrance, it shows that we have pride, and we need to commend each member of the golf course for turning around their financial situation. I want a safe, healthy, and clean environment for all citizens. I want safe water, excellent fire and police protection, EMS, paved sidewalks and streets. In providing these services, we need to make sure that we keep them affordable. We have a large retirement population and young people raising families, and we need to be very mindful and considerate of their financial situations so that they can continue to live in Minneapolis. I would like to continue to serve the citizens of Minneapolis as mayor in a leadership position. We are in serious economic times. State and federal funding revenues are down. Legislative actions are uncertain. We have to be more efficient in running our city government. My pledge is full council involvement, responsible city government, and taxpayer accountability. I would like to thank each of you for coming today, and I hope each one of you vote on April 2nd, and I'd also like to thank the chamber for this opportunity.
Thank you, Sanji. Virginia Hoover?
My name is Virginia Hoover, and I have been a resident of Minneapolis for 50-plus years. I was raised in rural South Dakota, attended a one-room school, like many of you did back in the day. I attended high school in Miller, South Dakota, and graduated there. Then I attended college at Cloud County Community College and received my bachelor, or my associate degree from them, and then went on to attend Merrimount College in Salina. And there, I received my bachelor degree in accounting. My work experience, for the first years of my children's lives, I was a stay-at-home mom. I cherish those years. I was able to participate in 4H, Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts with them. It was a very unique and enriching experience. Then I went on to work at Eldorado/Honor Build Industries for 18 years. I began there as a part-time secretary and ended as controller. I went on to spend two years at MarketAid Advertising Agency in Salina, and spent 10 years at Elko Corporate Offices in Abilene, Kansas. There, I was a member of their accounting team. I did loss prevention and also internal audit. My political experience, I spent 16 years on city council, eight years as council member and eight years as mayor. Eight years as council member and eight years as mayor. I'm dedicated to serving you, the taxpayers, and taking fiduciary care of your money. It is your money after all. Some of the best things that we have done during my term as mayor, I believe the street improvements has been a major, major deal. It took us years to decide how to do this. We looked at other communities that had done the concrete overlays. Glasgow did it, Newton, Kansas did it, and several other communities have done it and we saw how it worked with their streets. 30 seconds, okay. Some of the other community service that I'm involved in is Lions Club. I've served as president, vice president, secretary and treasurer and I served District Lions Club as treasurer for three years. I'm a Chamber member, Chamber of Commerce member and serve on the Board of Directors as well as being active in my church. I'm also a Director of Love in the Name of Christ and a member of the Kansas League of Municipalities. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Virginia. The next portion of our forum is going to be questions and answers. Each candidate will be given a chance to answer. Those who wish to give an answer, I guess maybe the thing to do is to give a hand signal if you have something that you want to say and we'll make sure that everyone gets a chance to speak. The questions that we have that have been turned in have to do with taxes, infrastructure, and representation. So we'll start out with our favorite topic. Yes? Okay. Do we have any people that have questions that they have jotted down and have not turned in? Thank you. Also, there may be time for some questions from the floor, but needless to say, we can't guarantee that. So we're going to start out with the topic of taxes. It's everyone's favorite topic, lots of discussion, lots of people who wish that there was some way to get rid of them, but in order to have infrastructure, services, facilities, it's a necessary evil. So the first two questions we have are kind of connected. They are, "Are you in favor of keeping taxes low and will you be looking at spending in the city and where cuts can be made?" Do we have candidates who would like to address those questions? The questions to do with taxes, "Are you in favor of keeping taxes low? Will you be looking, willing to look at spending in the city and where cuts can be made?" Okay.
I believe in keeping taxes low. I know that we have to have facilities, we have to have maintenance of the city and it costs money. But I also know that Minneapolis has a lot of retired people on a fixed income as well as young families trying to raise a family. And I know from both sides of it that it takes money and we can't spend our money pure, yeah stupidly I should say, in the city of Minneapolis. I get it out one way or the other. But I also know that we have to take care of the city and so I will vote for those things that are necessary, but I will not vote for things that I think is just a wasteful amount of money that we don't need, uh, need to keep the city operating.
Thank you. Anyone else? We have two other people. Let's let Leanna speak to this question and then Sanji.
We are on the council, are taxpaying members ourselves. We try to keep the taxes as low as we can for ourselves. We try to cut the budget where we can and this is an ongoing process because everybody on the council, we like to watch our own taxes too. So this is where personal interest does come in because taxes are high, you know, state, local, federal, you know, by the time you add it all on, you know, a big chunk of our income does go to taxes and we strive to keep it down. I strive to keep it down and this is just something that we do on an ongoing basis. We check the budget each year, budget time is coming up here pretty soon anyway, and we look at places to be able to cut here and cut there, other things increase. But in the same mode, we have to keep up with what's going on and what is needed. It is a very fine line to follow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Raising taxes is not the answer. I realize that we have to provide for services and infrastructure, but we have to be very mindful of this frivolous spending and watch what we're doing, that we can still maintain our community and people can afford to still live here. I think that is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address this question?
Having attended the council as much as I have, I think the council has got a real interest in keeping taxes down and spending, not spending any more than what they have to. But what I have noticed is that when it comes to major projects in the community, as the police department was an extension of the council, the council is an extension of everybody out here. So when there is a major expense that needs to come through the council to spend money for guidance, they need your input to know what you do want. Waiting until after a project is completed and contracts are signed and then coming in and making statements at that time is a little late. At that, we need your input when these topics come up. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lanny. Anyone else? Okay, we have some more specific questions. One of the questions here is about the population and projected growth rate for our community. They feel that this is an important thing to know before approving spending that would cause taxes to increase. I don't know if anyone can address our population growth and what they are considering that might affect that.
Thank you. Population growth is something that we are all concerned about and one of the things that will promote, help to promote population growth is the additions that we have started for the community, such as the Sunrise addition, the Country Club addition and so forth. We need new housing, affordable housing, and we need it now. One of the other things that will increase our population growth is because we have an aging population, we need to have affordable care for elderly and probably some townhouses where they do not have to have the maintenance, do not have to provide their own maintenance.
Thank you. Jim, you wanted to say something?
When it comes to the population of Minneapolis, Minneapolis has been Minneapolis society since I can remember when and it's a great community and it comes back to taxes. That's the reason I like to see the taxes lowered if anything, not higher, because we've had people come to town and look at homes and say, "Well, I can't pay these taxes. I can live in Salina cheaper." And so that's a big problem for a small community and I don't care whether it's Minneapolis or Abilene or something like that. It affects everybody. So that's the reason I think we have to watch that on this end because if we keep raising taxes, we're going to run the young people away because they can't afford to live here in Minneapolis. And so that's, that's what I feel about that. And I, and I just said, I think we've got a great community and I want to keep it growing. I hope to see it grow and, and by doing that, we can't keep raising the taxes.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Population growth is very important for maintaining our status and our community. It's very important to keep our taxes down so that people will want to move here and what I really hope is that we could entice some businesses to come here. We have a large industrial area out there and I think, you know, if we was really business-friendly and kept our taxes down, that we would have new business come to this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanji. Any other comments? Okay, we have a number of questions about infrastructure and about building. I'm going to kind of list off what they are first and then we'll see if people want to address them individually or as a group. We have a question about what would you do about the declining condition of the city park and the swimming pool? What are your views on building a new city building? What is the status of the proposed cell phone tower on West Laurel? And what would be your answer to increasing the electricity generating capacity of our power plant for the future? Would anyone like to address any of those specific items? Okay, Jim?
I can't remember anything you've talked about there though.
Okay.
Okay.
There's cell phones, city pool, park, swimming pool.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. I'm gonna start off with the city park. I think we've got a beautiful city park in this, in this city and I hope to maintain it at all, in any way possible. And first of all, I guess that would be one of my agendas if I become a council member. We've got potholes big enough to lose you down there in that road around the city park. I feel that that's one priority that needs to be taken care of as soon as possible to beautify the park and to make it safe to ride around and walk around because a lot of people go down there and walk, just to walk. And some, I'm afraid somebody's gonna fall and hurt themselves very bad down there and I think that's a priority. As far as the swimming pool, I'd love to see us build a new one, but I don't know how we can afford it. A new swimming pool today, it costs a million dollars probably. And maybe I'm high, but I don't think so. And so that would be up to the city if they wanted to raise a sales tax, because I think that would be the only way I'd approve something like that, if they wanted to do it through a sales tax, not property taxes. Also on electricity capacity, I hope we never lose our power plant. I'll tell you what, we're very fortunate in this city. I don't know about you, but I don't remember ever getting out of power for more than two hours and that was an ice storm here a few years ago. So I hope we continue to have it and if we have to, if we have to increase the capacity, I say we increase the capacity to keep that. And also on, what was the other one? Views on the new city building? That's a tough one. I probably shouldn't answer this. I think it'd be awesome if we could. There again, can we as a city afford it? That's the whole question and that's the way I'm gonna leave it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on the park, pool, cell phone tower, new city building, or electricity generating plant?
I agree with Jim on that we do have a beautiful park and I also agree on the potholes, the road needs to be fixed really bad. When I got on City Council eight years ago, so many of the constituents told me, "Please do whatever you have to to save the swimming pool." It's very important we have it for the youth of this town and I think it's a wonderful thing. Yes, I believe we need our own power plant for the sake of it. We can always have electricity, as Jim said, we very seldom, maybe a couple hours without it.
And what else was there?
Oh, on the building, on this city building, I really don't know much about it. I wasn't chosen to be on the task force. We did, I did ask for an update on it and was told that they had, the task force had been going to other towns and checking their facilities and, and that basically it was going to be very expensive. I've always been under the mindset, it's great to really have big city ideas. I like big city ideas, but I also realize it's a small town trying to pay for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanji.
The declining of the city park, I agree with everybody on what they've said so far. Swim pool, we need something for the kids out there. Kids of my own and, you know, you see them around town and stuff and it'd be nice to have something to keep their attention and keep them going. Maybe that would keep them around when they have kids, you know? The, what else was there? Oh, the cell phone tower, I had no idea we were even looking at getting one. You know, that might be an avenue of bringing money to town. The city building? I won't touch on that one. The electricity capacity, you know, you hear it from a lot of people different ways with the city building or with the, with the electric power plant, with the excess money that we're all paying. And you've heard it the other way about, you know, lucky to have it. And I agree, I think we're lucky to have it. I think we'd be lost without it. You see some of them other towns I've seen without it and, you know, they're waiting a little bit longer than we are to get their electricity and get some heat going, so I think it's a good thing to have.
Thank you.
I'll start with the city park. The city park is a very pretty park and I like it. There has been an ongoing problem with the pool, with it, and the city's been taking every advantage it can to, to keep the pool in operating condition. That is going to be a major expense and figuring out how it can be funded is going to be an important decision that the city's gonna have to take up if, if they're going to revitalize the pool. The city building, for the fire, the police and EMS to operate more cohesively, a building to be able to put everybody in and house them, to join or train jointly is an important situation. It's something that the community does need to address. Should it be addressed next year? Don't know. Again, that's gonna be another one of those large ticket items that's gonna have to take input from the community as to what they want, how big they want it and how they want to fund it more importantly. The power plant, that is one of our major assets. The engines that we have down there are getting well-dated, so that is something that needs to be brought forward to look at updating some of the engines and the kilowatts that we can put out. So those are again, important factors that the community needs to come forward and give the council on ideas of what they want done and how they want it paid for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other issues have been pretty well addressed. The one I would like to address is the new public safety building. I know that there has not been a lot of information out about this at this time. What has happened so far is the task force, and the task force is made up of City Council members, members of the community, members of the fire department, members of the police department, members of the EMS departments. department, members of the EMS departments, all coming together to brainstorm ideas. We have visited other communities and looked at what they have. Some of the communities that we visited were Lindesburg, Bennington, Salina. Some of our members visited Beloit. And we have gotten ideas from all of these visits. At this time, and I don't know how many of you realize, our EMS is, is functioning very efficiently, extremely efficiently for what they have to deal with. To begin with, our EMTs are housed at the police department. So when they get a phone call, they have to go, jump in their cars, go up to the hospital and pick up the ambulances and make their call. They can do this in less than three minutes' time on average, which is phenomenal. So we have two ambulances housed at the hospital. We have one ambulance housed at the city building in the park. And all of these ambulances have to be serviced every day and made ready to go on a run. We average about one run per day on average for the entire year. Needless to say, with that being said, you know that there are some days when they have three or four runs or more, and other days when they sit around and do nothing. These people are not doing nothing when they're on duty. They are, every day, they have to check the ambulances, make sure that they are ready to roll at any moment. So this is very critical for the EMTs. The second thing is the fire department. Our fire department has outgrown the area that they're currently housed in. At this time, we have to rent space for one truck and a boat and some other equipment. This does not make it easy for the firemen either. Plus, they're, they recently tore a door off of a truck because they moved two trucks at the same time, which is going to happen when you're, we're as crowded as they are. So this fire department has, or our, where the fire trucks are housed, has functioned well for the last 50 years. It's been nearly 50 years since that building was built. And the equipment continues to expand, get larger. The gear that the guys wear is larger, more cumbersome. And we need to be looking at, do we need a public safety building? Jim? I can be done at any time. Okay, thank you. I just thought that you would like to know more information about a public safety building.
Thank you, Virginia. I don't believe Leanna has a chance. Would you like to address these issues?
I'm not, I'm not gonna restate what everybody else has said because I do think that we have, I, I love our electrical system, the electricity, the way we get it here, and we generate it ourselves. Because I know in, in 2007, you know, there were cities that went without electricity for two weeks. I went without for 45 minutes. So I have no complaints about that. As Lanny touched on, things are, everything's getting older, just like, just like we are. The equipment's starting to run down. The park issue is we, I am on the park committee, and we are really trying to get that fixed up. We're working on a walking trail that's a half a mile. We hope to expand it. We're putting in a, one Eagle Scout boys, putting in a gazebo where the little fish pond is. And we're working to move the fence out from the swimming pool and make a snack area. One of the things I didn't get to finish when I was talking was I have a vision for the swimming pool. I visited the one in Abilene, and the way they expanded their existing pool and took in a little area to make a small play park or swim water park there. It's really nice, and I'd like to see us be able to do something along that line. And, but that's just a, a dream, and hopefully we can do that someday, in the near future, even a year or two. Because I, young people need a place to go in the summer and work off that energy. And as ladies who like to water aerobics, we want it too. So, yeah, I agree. We need to do some work on that, and I'd like to look into it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Leanna. Okay, Kevin?
Well, I haven't been able to disagree with much of what's been said, except we've got our swimming pool, city building, power plant. We're gonna have too many things that we can afford to do all this. We need to look at, can we, as Leann said, can we expand our, use part of the pool? Can we expand our city building? The power plant, you know, we keep going back to that. We've got awesome electricity all the time. I'm hoping we can do something with, and I know they do a lot of upgrading, but, you know, one of my dreams is that, you know, our streets, we've been doing the slurry seal this year. I'd like to look at something similar to that, but with the power, you know, we've got, you, you drive around town, you can see bare elec, bare copper wires. I'd like to see us spend some money, get a plan to, to, you know, replace a certain amount of electrical wires. That's gonna save us money in the long run. And that's just one of the things I'd like to do. The city building expansion, I don't know how we can afford that at this time. I'm not saying that's an absolute no on me, but I'd like to look at other options on, you know, can we expand what we have? I don't know. But that's all I've got on that. Thanks.
Thank you, Kevin. I'm going to ask each of the candidates to think for a minute and pull together their thoughts on what they feel is their number one priority that they would like to move forward if elected. And I'd also like for them to address, we have one more question about how you will, what you will do to try and stay in touch with all of your constituents. So while they're thinking, does anyone have any questions from the floor?
Yeah.
Okay?
Is it a question all of you could, should, address, answer to me? How would you all feel with the vigilante about possibly joining part of our departments with counties, such as police department, sheriff department, EMS county, if they don't save the money?
Okay, I don't know that everyone could hear that. The question had to do with, and correct me if I don't get this right, about instead of having just a city level, to make a county level of putting together the fire department?
No, no, no. Fire's already county.
Okay. Fire's already county. Okay, law enforcement? Okay. Okay. Okay, I believe Kevin's ready to comment.
I've just got a short comment on this. I would love to look into it, because that's been one of the things I've thought about. I'm not saying we have to do it, but let's look into it and see if we can save money making the police and, and sheriff into one. There's other counties that do it, well, only two that I know of. And I was told on the day only Riley, I thought Riley and Wyandotte. They are bigger, but I think it goes back to this old saying, let's look outside of the box. We don't have to do it if it proves, if we look into it and it's too big a hassle, it won't save us money. Then let's not, EMS, I don't have an opinion on that at this time, because I really haven't studied that part of it. But that's, that's how I feel on that one.
Thank you, Kevin. Jim would like to address this?
At this time, no. I would not be for putting the sheriff and the city police together. As far as EMS, I don't know that much about it yet. I'd like to know more about it. I'd look into it. I have nothing, I'm not saying no on all of this, but I, I know definitely I would not put the sheriff and the city police together on that part of it. I guess I answered it then. That's how I feel.
Thank you, Jim. Would anyone else care to comment? Sanji?
On the consolidation, I really don't know that much about it. I wouldn't say I was for it or against it, because I don't know the pros and cons of it. But I would be willing to listen to see whether, you know, whether it's a feasible project to get involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanji. Any other comments? Russell?
I don't think a lot of people understand how much work it takes to, or how much that the police department does and how much the sheriff's office does on a separate daily basis. I don't know if it would save us any money by consolidating. It, it's nice to have the two entities separate, to keep track of the, the city and to make sure there's somebody out there in the county. We often work together. It's a, that's a touchy subject. I agree that it's something that might be interesting to look into. But at this point in time, I think that we're not hurting anything by what we're doing, having the PD and having the sheriff's office separate.
Thank you, Russell. Lanny?
These lights are something else. Address the consolidation of law enforcement. At this particular point, other than consolidation of the personnel itself, we're pretty much working on a consolidation now. The only thing that is not consolidated is the personnel. We're not duplicating any services. The sheriff's office has dispatch. The city is kicking in a portion for dispatch fees. The sheriff's office has the jail. There are separate buildings, but if we were to move the police department to the sheriff's office, or sheriff's office to the police department, there'd absolutely not enough room in existing buildings as it is now. That would be an increase. So at this particular point, as we are operating, there's no real duplication of services as far as paying two dispatcher fees or any of that. So I wouldn't see any need in consolidation of the law enforcement. The consolidation of EMS, that is a possibility. There are some things that would definitely need to be worked out, but that is something that maybe needs to be looked at. Thank you.
Thank you, Lanny. Any other comments? Okay, I'm going to ask that the candidates give their closing comments in the form of, as I requested, their number one priority if they were elected. So let's start with, we'll just start and come down the table if that's okay. Russell?
Yeah, I guess my number one goal is to keep it going in the direction it's going. Everybody brainstorm together. Communication. Yeah, I don't think that this is a bad city whatsoever. I don't think the city council is doing anything wrong. I think there's a lot of new people with interest to advance it and build it, and keep going the direction we're going. I guess the question was, would I do better or what would I improve? There was nothing to, I mean, just communication is the biggest thing with everybody and, and working together for the city.
Thank you, Russell. Leanna?
This was kinda hard to pick out one thing, because there's several things that I'd like to see. But right now, I'd really like to see our, our city get a GPS system mapped out for the town and for this area, because in, in case of a disaster, we need to know where, where the utilities are, where the manholes are, where, where different things are. If we don't have this, I mean, one of the biggest concerns I've had since I've been on the council is what would I do as a council member? You know, we're supposed to help the city if a tornado would hit here. Greensburg, you know, it wa, almost wiped out that little town. And then that, that's always concerned me as, as to what we would do. You know, we need to keep the water system going, we need to keep it cleaned out. And the GPS system, when you get down to it, is not a lot of money on the scale of what runs a city. But we really need to get this mapped out, and, and I'd like to see it done, if not for this year's storm system, maybe next year. So that, that's my main concern right now.
Thank you, Leanna. Kevin?
Well, the number one priority is try to help keep the taxes down by, well, watching the spending, keeping, try to keep plenty of bids in for what we're doing. And I keep going back, let's look outside of the box. If people have new ideas, let's look at them. We don't have to change, but ideas are good, and let's keep them coming in, because there's, there's lots we don't know. So if we can get some new ideas and to watch the spending, you know, is there more maintenance things we can do, instead of wait until things are broke? The guys are, these, our guys on our city work really hard. Is there things, maintenance things we can do to, to help make their job better and easier to, you know, just to fix things before they break? That's really all. Is that it?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. Jim?
To start with, I wanna, I wanna be on the council, and there's a lot of things I'm, I'm sure that I would like to do, but I need to be on the council, see what's going on right now, because we have a great bunch of people there, don't get me wrong. I just have some ideas that maybe might help towards the city. One of the priorities I have is I'd like to see us set some budgets aside, because as been mentioned, we need some power lines. I think we've got some sewer problems, we've got some water line problems. We've done a lot of work in that area, but it seems like the city's always broke. And my, when I do my budget at home, if I want something down the way, I put $10 a week away, and when I get the money, I buy it. Well, I think the city ought to work on the same principle. And that, and that's my priority as far as being on the city council.
Thank you, Jim. Lanny?
Wish there was a couple more people before me, so I'd give a lot more thought. Given the four things that we were talking about earlier, city park, city building, phone tower, and power plant, looking at those four items, I'm gonna say at this particular point, we've got a season coming up, the summer, that maybe at this particular point, we need to be sure and watch on the, the swimming pool and the city park and make sure that we have something that the youth of our community can, can utilize during the summer. The others are gonna take some major dollars to, to accomplish, so. Given the four topics that we talked of earlier, I would say the number one thing we need to look at in the immediate future would be the pool. And then going on from there, I'd say probably start some serious conversation with the community as to what might be done as far as the city building. Thank you.
Thank you, Lanny. Virginia? Thank you, Lanny. Virginia?
Thank you. I guess my number one priority would be trying to improve our community within our current budget. Now, we have not raised taxes for at least four years. We would like to keep that in that area. We'd like to lower it, but unfortunately we've, when we start lowering taxes, we compromise services, which we don't want to do. We would like to improve the infrastructure and whatever we can do is still keep your taxes low. As far as communication with the public, my email address is avhoover@live.com and my phone number is in the phone book. My cell number is available if you ask me. And other than that, I thank you very much for coming out today and I hope you all vote on April 2nd.
Thank you, Virginia. Sanji?
In closing, I would like to stress, the most important thing to me is a responsible city government. Also, I will have a full council involvement and there will be taxpayer accountability. And I would appreciate your vote on April 2nd. Thank you so much for coming this afternoon and thank you for the chamber for this opportunity.
Thank you, Sanji. I want to thank all of our candidates for coming out and thank all of you for coming out. The Lions Club has very graciously arranged to have some cookies and refreshments. So, you'll have a chance to extend conversations with people. Yes, sir? Very good. The, um, the drinks and desserts, they do have a donation fund there and those monies will be used for a youth scholarship. Thank you. We also, putting in a plug for the chamber, we want to make sure that everybody remembers to mark their calendars for the first weekend of May for the Mini-K Day celebration. And also that's when we will have the chamber banquet. And I have somebody who is pointing back there.
That guy wants to ask a question.
Okay.
Up there in the front row.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Question, um, Ken's talking about taxes, we need cool, we need to save, help with all this. I don't know the fact, all the banks, but I know a few years ago, a company offered to look at purchasing golf courses. They come in and purchase several, like, ten golf courses. And I worked with twenty thousand dollars of taxpayer money for that golf course. Why would we not want to sell something that they can, they can make it bigger and better? And that twenty thousand dollars can go for approval or the city building or something. And also, other than those questions, they said, somebody said they raised about twenty thousand dollars grant for the park, but we need all this stuff down the park. So, why do we use that on a trail that is not necessary when we already have a trail around the park?
Okay, I don't know if people could hear that. The response about the park having a twenty thousand dollar award to them, that was in part a grant and in part private donations given to it. They were given specifically for the purpose of improving and extending the trail and facilities at the park. Any other questions or comments? Yes? Okay, the ward information is published in the Minneapolis Messenger and it is also available online and it is also available at the city clerk's office. I'm sorry? Okay. Okay, they think that you're probably in the second ward. If, um, if you have questions or unsure about your ward, I know that you could call the city clerk's office and they can tell you specifically. And if you, like I said... Okay, and again, I know that you can Google this, because I've done this myself. And if you go to the city website, there is a map that shows the ward. And I believe that there's also a verbal description of from where to where that's on there as well as the map. And if you have difficulty, I know if you call, call on somebody down at the city clerk's office or you could even, even call the chamber office and I'll help you figure it out. Okay, any, uh, was there a question or comment back there? Okay, poor thing, she just moved. Sorry about that. Oh, okay. In addressing the question about the, about the twenty thousand for the golf course, is that the part that you'd like for us to address?
Yes.
Okay. Um, is there anyone who would like to address that it takes twenty thousand, which I have to admit, I'm kind of surprised it's that low of a number for the city to maintain the golf course?
I probably shouldn't answer this, because I'm going to lose the voters from the golfers. And I used to golf. I felt when we took the city, the city was donated to the golf course or the golf course was donated to the city with for tax purposes. Well, that was great. I didn't have a problem with that. But then all of a sudden, we started kicking money in for the golf course. I feel like if you want to play golf, you can pay for the golf. We've got it. We're going to live with it now. And there's nothing we can do. I would be for doing, like you said, I thought there was a great opportunity when they come and I don't know all the particulars about it, because I just hear a lot of hearsay on that. I thought it was a great opportunity for Minneapolis to have taken that opportunity, because as you said, they would have improved the golf course and it had a lot more out there for offering, offering to them, I believe. I may be wrong. If I am, I hope somebody can correct me. And if we have that opportunity again, I hope they look into it more. I really do. Not that we're going to lose the golf course, but I think we'll have a better golf course for the community with less of our money involved in it. So, that's how I feel about the golf course.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else care to comment? Leanna?
The golf course is like any other entity. It has a hard time maintaining itself. As far as the money that we put into it as a city, we're very, very fortunate that it's only twenty thousand. Other cities put in hundred thousand to have one, the thing, just as good as ours, not even, not much better. The golf, they, they have to keep the fees lower so people can play. They have to keep the dues lower so that they can have the members out there to play. They have a lot of volunteer help throughout the year. And without that volunteer help and without their big golf games and all this, they couldn't maintain it. And I think they do a phenomenal job at keeping it at twenty thousand a year. And I have to commend them for that. And the restaurant has done a great service for our golf club. Cities that have a golf club, they, they, they look better. They, they, they attract people. Businesses is conducted on the golf course. We just need our golf course. We need it for the community. We need it for the people. And here again, it, the schools use it, Bennington and Minneapolis schools, the boys use it. They keep the price down really low so that the students can play. And I, I for one commend our golfers and our golf course for the good job and the great way they conduct business and keep it going. And I'm real proud of the golf course myself.
Thank you, Leanna. I believe that Sanji have a comment?
When that other golf course association wanted to come in here and stuff, I talked to some of the board members out there and their answer to me was they did not want to compete with the wellness center. They didn't want the competition. I didn't quite understand it, so I would suggest that you contact some of the board members of the golf course and see if you can get a better answer than I did. Thank you.
Thank you, Sanji. Virginia?
Yes, thank you. I, to the best of my knowledge, this proposal never came before city council. Just to help to set you straight, this was a golf course decision, not a city council decision. Okay?
Thank you, Virginia. Any other comments on the golf course? Very good. I believe that Ashley wanted to say some parting words. I want, while she's coming up, I want to thank all of you for coming out and I appreciate that everyone of you is taking your responsibility and privilege of voting seriously and informing yourself, learning about your candidates, learning about the issues. And I'm going to hand this back to Ashley for closing.
I just want to say a huge thank you already to our current elected officials. It is not an easy job. There are a lot of issues around small towns, staying alive and being, you know, having the citizens contribute to that. So, as the chamber commerce president and an invested business owner in this community, I think we owe our current elected officials a huge hand, along with our city members and all of that. So, thank you to all of them. Definitely not an easy job and it's always best to assume that we're all on the same side. So, the, the intentions are there, that we all want to see a better community. So, thank you for you guys spending the time in this evening, just to be here, but also the time that you've already put in to your campaigns and everything else. It just means, all of that is volunteer, means that you guys really care about this community. So, thank you. We also wanted to say, which she started to, the Lions Club have cookies out there. The donation will go to youth projects. Youth scholarships. And, and we also want to invite anybody who has any issues that they want to bring up with the chamber or would like to see improve in the chamber of commerce. Andy and I would love to have you in our office. Give us a call. We're always willing to listen. And I think I heard tonight, the ideas is always a good thing. Love that. So, bring your ideas to us and we'll try to take over from there. We want to invite you to Mini-K Day. It is the first weekend in May. We have a great weekend planned. We will have the Markley Grove Park. We'll have a movie night in the park that Friday evening, followed by a full day of Saturday events sponsored by the Chamber and Chamber businesses. As well as Sunday will be our chamber banquet. So, we'd love to invite you out. If you have questions or would like banquet tickets, please call the Chamber Commerce Office. So, thank you all for coming.